Board had started a study of the book Good Governance as a Choice, probably in the summer of fifteen or maybe even fourteen, fourteen or fifteen. And you have kind of taken this on in chunks over the last couple of years. We've defined who our clients are, we've defined results policies, those are outrageous outcomes. We've defined the parameters that we would use between the board and the superintendent relationship, which defines your role and authority as the board, mine as the superintendent, where those overlap, and where they overlap how we would do business together. We have also defined operational expectations for some of the broad categories of work of the district, for example, facilities planning. There is more work to do around operational expectations, and certainly we can continue to kind of chunk that off as we move forward together. A major body of this work is the board, or the governance culture policies, which, like Steve said, are the commitments that you're making to one another about the way that you'll do business together. And it outlines those culture policies in some broad categories, and that's the document you have in front of you. It was sent to you for review in advance of the meeting. These are certainly springboard proposals. They can be changed, added to, deleted. I did make some recommendations that are in the type written, for example, where there's strike through, those were recommendations that I made. Certainly, they're recommendations and can be changed. So again, I think the real, the part that's most important about this work are there things that you feel like are important to you as a board in the way that you do business together? I think some of the language you will recognize from other conversations that you've had, other documents that you've worked with. So really, just an opportunity to add, ask for clarification, delete, et cetera.
Okay. So everybody's had this, has had a chance to read through it. We will go through it again together. I believe Amy was going to send in some comments if she had any.
She will.
And Aaron hopefully will be here. I know he's been out of town, so he's...
And this is a change in time. We typically meet at four o'clock. I know that we had talked about that, but, you know, when you've been out of town, that might be the case.
Yeah. What is the Aspen Group International?
It's the author of the book, Good Governance, Good Governance as a Choice.
So we're...okay. Are we gonna have that on our paper work?
No, but I didn't want to take it off because it's where it came from. So certainly after we make the modifications to it and it becomes our work, I would modify the document.
Will these eventually get into our board policies, board level?
Correct. That whole is at 1,000 series will need updated, and we've, I've held off in doing that until we have this body of work done, and then we would do it as one sweeping set of changes to that whole, probably the whole section.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we'll kick off, starting at page one, board purpose. So, any comments anybody has on board purpose? So results policies, and then operational expectations policies, which I think we are, we have developed, or...
Yep, we've defined the results, they are, the results policies are defined and formalized as the outrageous outcomes, the five outrageous outcomes that we've used to build our strategic plan, and then the operational expectations have been defined. Some of them have been acted on through formal board approval, some have not. So we would need to take them all through.
Okay. Very good. Any comments on that first page? Looks fine to me. All right, governing commitments.
Did we define stakeholders anywhere else? I know we've talked about it.
We've defined clients, and there is a document within the body of work that clearly outlines that who our quote unquote clients are, which I think you could equate to stakeholders. Certainly, we could do some additional clarification if the board deemed it necessary.
Or just use consistent language. Change the clients, any other ones to stakeholders, or stakeholders to clients here, if it's defined somewhere else.
Okay.
Governing commitments. Board will awfully govern with primary emphasis on results. Full exploration of diverse viewpoints, focus on governance rather than administrative issues. I think we've been through this before, discussed this. Observe clear separation of board and superintendent roles, make official decisions by formal vote of the board, and govern with long-term vision. Going on down through the different items here. Board will function as a single unit. Faithfully make decisions as a group by formal vote. No officer, individual, or committee of the board will be permitted to limit the board's performance or prevent the board from fulfilling its commitments. Board is responsible for its own performance and commits itself to continuous improvement, which is why we are doing this today. Board will assume that its members, or assure that its members are provided with training, professional support.
I would say the last sentence of this section, we don't do.
Board will assess the quality of each meeting by debriefing the meeting following its conclusion, so...
So either we should take it out or commit to doing it.
That is an interesting, how would you do that?
Wait.
I mean, it has to be part of the meeting, right?
It does, yeah.
Well, we haven't been doing it. I don't know that we need to do that, certainly for each meeting.
Yeah, I've done it in my career before, and I haven't seen a lot of benefit. Most of the time, it turns into an exercise after a while.
But, and it's always in the, in the minutes, you know, it's...
Well, it might be worth doing that occasionally. So I wouldn't necessarily strike it, but what if we just put... Something about debriefing meetings regularly, or something like that.
Can be.
Yeah.
This doesn't really work for an open public meeting after its conclusion. When you, when you close the meeting, we can't continue to discuss.
No, no, I bet we could add it at the end of, all right, so tonight, we're gonna debrief this meeting. I don't, I don't know, I'm a little concerned about what that would turn into, but I think it is good to, to assess the effectiveness of our meetings, so I don't necessarily want to strike it, but...
So another idea, just, I'm just offering, and certainly this is the board's business, not mine necessarily, but we do, as a matter of business, identify an annual work plan in our big chart that outlines all the agenda items, and we periodically have study sessions. You know, you could build it in as a commitment during our two to three, like our board retreat in November. I mean, that might be...
I think that sounds good.
Okay.
Where we can talk, I mean, we, we talked about our meeting, we changed our meetings, the structure of our meetings, and I certainly wouldn't want to...
It's okay.
...debrief each and every meeting.
So we can just be intentional about defining in the annual work plan in those retreat times, a short debrief of how are things going?
Yeah. So you've got to know that.
I do.
That section, all right. We're on page two. Aaron, welcome. Thank you. Right, to ensure the board's business meetings are conducted with maximum effectiveness and efficiency, members will, you know, you can read through those things, I think they're all things that we are familiar with. Come prepared, don't interrupt, limit or eliminate side conversations.
I would strike E. Not repeat what has already been said. I understand that they probably have that in there so that you're not wasting time, but oftentimes, it's required to repeat what's said. Saying people can't repeat what's already been said doesn't seem important here. When we talk about, everything else here talks about not wasting time, you know, support the president, having an orderly meeting.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there's a couple of different things there, so don't repeat what has already been said. I mean, if you're, if you're of the same opinion as somebody, it's probably good to express that and say why, which would be repeating what's already been said. So I don't necessarily want to eliminate it, but I don't know how we would reword it. I don't know that we want to get into words...
As written, we're not necessarily following it.
So do you have...yeah.
Well, I don't think that normally we repeat, it would be say, I agree with what Scott says.
Yeah, and then you could lay out...
Yeah, add something to it.
The same reason, well, I'm perfectly fine saying, look, I feel the same way, I feel like this, and this, and this, that's already been said, but...
Yeah.
I...
But I, I don't necessarily think that I need to repeat everything, but I agree with what Scott said, and blah.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm okay with leaving it, but...
Well, we're not gonna enforce it, though.
Yeah, well, I think just be...
It's not even clear on what it means.
I think what it's saying, yes, I agree.
I defer to you, but I wouldn't mind deleting it.
Yeah. Anybody else feel strongly one way or the other? Okay. Do not, or not play to the audience, or monopolize the discussion, support president's efforts to facilitate an orderly meeting, communicate openly and actively, encourage equal participation, practice respectful body language.
So are we leaving E?
I think we should leave E. I mean, I think, again...
I did, I did want to call to the board's attention that I recommended striking B, as we had that conversation at length with Tricia.
Yeah.
So I struck it.
I think for now, we can strike that. If we need to add some formality later, we can come back and revisit that.
Okay.
Okay, turning the page. We'll use a consent agenda, any issues with that? Five, an item may be removed upon request of a member, so same thing. I don't know that we necess, I think, yeah. I don't know that we necessarily want to hold hard and fast to the by nine AM.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that. I mean, I'm happy to, I've made requests after, which is, I don't mind trying to do it earlier, because I realize it's hard.
So, so I just want to clarify, number five does not align with current practice. It was a recommendation. So I think what I would recommend is that we just have some clarity amongst us how we do that. I, it doesn't, it has not happened in my two years that there's been a request for that, so I'm not sure how you have done it in the past with prior leadership. So I'm fine with whatever the practice has been, I just don't know what it is. No one has ever called me and asked me to remove something.
Yeah, I think that only, I've, I've had questions about it before, and they've taken it off. I haven't requested it be taken off. I just wanted clarification, and...
So we've just pulled it?
Yeah, which is fine. I mean, I didn't mean to have it pulled, but if it gets, I don't, I just wanted some clarification on things, but I'm sometimes late at the request, you know?
So why don't we have...
I just don't know how we handled it.
I, I think you want to leave it, because you can think of times when somebody's requested that a personnel action be taken off because it's sensitive and more research needs to be done, just, the nine AM doesn't really buy us anything, that I see, unless you can tell us why nine AM versus noon or two.
I would just say in terms of staff, like if you called me at three and said, I want you to pull this, by that time, we've loaded board packets, et cetera. So I would say as early in the day as possible. I don't know that the magic time is nine AM. I would say noon, or, but like if you call me at three, it makes it tough on staff.
I, I think the other thing, too, so typically, if it's not on the, typically, we don't get into discussion on things that are on the consent agenda, but if it's something that somebody feels like needs to be voted on separately or discussed separately, then I personally have no issue of asking, can we move this to later in the meeting, even during the meeting? Now, maybe that's, can't be done from a legal perspective, but...
It'd be nice to avoid that.
We'd have to ask Sarah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Right.
I think it would.
I think, I think nine is fine, or noon, like, that's what he says, I mean, it's, I just wasn't familiar, but I'm happy to try to make sure I do that sooner, but I've never like...
And certainly, we as staff work really hard to accommodate requests from the board, and so if we could do it, if you called me later and we could do it, we would do it. It does get complicated the closer we get to like four or four thirty.
Maybe say, at nine AM of the day of the week, if possible, or, or, you know, try, I don't know, he should, or...
Yeah, we could leave it, and a member could always make a motion during section eight to table it, or to, you know, take it off the consent agenda.
Yeah, I, that's, that's what I was getting at. I'm not sure that we should be so strict, but I think we should have the flexibility, and if, you know, we, we make a motion to move it, and if enough board members want to move it, then we can.
Yeah, there's an exception to...
During the meeting. Okay, fair enough.
And like I said, if you notice something, call me, and we, you know, we do our best to accommodate.
Okay. Number seven, the board will direct the organization through policy. Any concerns there? I think that's pretty straightforward. Hopefully, that's our goal. The board by majority vote will revise or amend its policies at any time. As a customary practice, a proposed policy revision will be discussed at one session of the board prior to being approved. So I think those are pretty straightforward. Any comments on any of those? Page four, board job description. Board's job is represent, lead, and serve the stakeholders, and govern the district by establishing expectations for organizational results. Expectations for quality operational performance and monitoring actual performance. So I think there's that term stakeholders again, I don't know if we want to...
I'll just align it all with our client language, yep.
Okay. The board will ensure the results are the dominant focus of district performance, advocate for students, initiate and maintain constructive two-way dialogue with students, staff, parents, and district, and public. Written board governing policies will address results, operational expectations, governance culture, board superintendent relationship.
I did want to point out here that I think our current board superintendent relationship policies are called the board CEO policies, and I had a request from at least one board member to change that to say board superintendent, because it's, it creates confusion for our community, like people don't know, like, what's CEO? She's, who's that? We have a superintendent, so I had, if you're fine with leaving it here, I will change those other policies to align with this language.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Okay. Number five, ensure acceptable superintendent performance through effective monitoring of results and operational expectations. And six, ensure board, or ensure acceptable board performance through effective evaluation of board actions and processes. Any additions? And then, looks like number seven was appoint an independent auditor to conduct annual external review of the district's financial condition and report directly to the board. That happens whether we want to or not. Okay? So every year, we get audited, so I don't know that we need that one in there. Number six, officer roles. So this would be the, in our board, president, vice president. Officers of the board are those listed in this policy, their duties are those assigned by this policy and others required by law. President provides leadership to the board, ensures faithful execution of the board's processes, exercises interpretive responsibilities with integrity, reflecting the spirit and intent of the board's policies. Normally serves as the board's official spokesperson. The president has the following specific authority and duties. Monitor board actions to ensure they are consistent with the board's own rules and policies, and other obligations imposed by agencies who this authority supersedes the board's own authority. Conduct board meeting deliberations to ensure the board discussion and attention are focused on board issues, assure the board's meeting discussions are productive, efficient, and orderly. We try and do that. Board chair, chair board meetings using the authority normally vested in the chair as described in Robert's Rules of Order. Newly revised. Loosely revised, how about that?
So you, as a board, had a pretty deep discussion about this when Tricia Lubek was here, and I, I have to apologize, I don't remember where we landed, so I didn't make a revision to that, although I would ask for clarification, so whatever revision you would like, I...
I like loosely.
Well...
We basically...
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know that, so it's probably good to be formal.
Yeah.
And I think what we're doing works for us, but I'm sure we could tighten it up, but I, I'm sure there's a lot of stuff in Robert's Rules. We don't, I don't know that we need a parliamentarian, but we, maybe we could put, well...
Just leave it and go from there.
Yeah. I, yeah, I don't even know what to change it to.
I don't, I'm not even familiar with them. I have to admit...
Is there a Cliff Notes version of Robert's Rules of Order? Yeah, exactly. I was just thinking the same thing, all the highlights and...
Yes.
You do things too, it creates the wrong environment, I think, that doesn't feel like a collaborative, community, board, district, and so you kind of, we're not in the Supreme Court, right? You know, it's a different, you know, but certainly, we want to be formal and respectful, and...
And I think, for the most part, we follow that, especially when we're making motions and discussing, so I, can we get, just review this again? If you can just, we'll just look, not, not this, but we'll get Robert's Rules of Orders and look through there and see if there's anything that we're not in compliance with.
Okay, yes. I...
The Cliff Notes version.
I will have Sarah help me with this. I think she's fairly familiar.
So, yeah, let's do that, and if we need to put it as one of our extended study session items right at the end of the meeting, we say, look, here's, here's what we learned.
Yeah, so maybe kind of an analysis of, look, here's the pieces we're following, here's the ones we're not.
Are we okay with that?
Are we okay with that?
Do you want to adjust a little bit?
Sure.
Can we just say that this is how we're gonna do our modified version?
Yeah, I just...
Okay, modifying things.
That's good.
So this is talking about the authority vested in the board chair. It's not necessarily talking about how we do our meetings, maybe that's further on. Okay, lead time to board meetings, debriefing, meeting debriefing, so there's that term again.
Let's just take that out.
So what we indicated on the last page is that we would build that into our quarterly retreats?
Right.
Yeah. So were you here, Aaron, when we had that discussion on debriefings?
I...
So go back to page two. Number two, at the bottom, it says, we'll assess the quality of each meeting by debriefing the meeting following its conclusion. And we haven't done that, and I don't know that we want to necessarily take the time to do that. I'm guessing that for most boards, that's something that they, I mean, this is kind of like a superintendent evaluation that we don't do in public, so I'm, I'm not sure that we want to get into that. But we do, I think, regularly, we've talked about it at our retreats, maybe talk about, all right, is there anything we need to do to improve our board meetings? Anything that's going well, anything that's not?
Yeah, the reviewing every board meeting, I mean, maybe that is a good self-reflection in other meetings I've been, you know, we always review, or kind of, what are our action, you know, kind of this general, but I don't know how you fit that into, probably wouldn't be at our board meeting, maybe that would be something we would do as part of the study session? I don't know, if we wanted to do it regularly.
Yeah, and that's what we had been talking about.
Like building it into that retreat that we do now in November, or the one we do in July, or, you know, build it into kind of some quarterly retreats where we reflect on how have things been going, what would we change, if anything?
So let's take a look at the language of that lead timely board meeting, debriefings. We probably need to make that consistent with the item up front.
Sure.
Okay, number two, make all interpretive decisions by board policies in the governance culture and board superintendent relationship sections using reasonable judgment. President not authorized to make any interpretive decisions without policies created by the board. Interpretation of these policies is a responsibility of the superintendent. Exercise any authority as an individual to supervise or direct the superintendent. So that's a board function, not a president function. Assure that there is an evaluation of the superintendent. The board president is the official spokesperson about issues decided by the board. Executes documents authorized by the board. Appoint and remove members of all board committees and board liaisons to other organizations with confirmation of the board, and serve as a member of the board's executive committee. So we don't have an executive committee.
Right, so these policies talked about the executive committee. They've used that formal terminology, Steve, for when, it would be for us, when you and Amy meet with me, and Sarah, and Susanna, and Eric, they refer to that body as the board's executive committee.
Okay.
I, I left it for your consideration, I, I certainly don't have strong feelings one way or the other.
Certainly, for new board members, it's important, like, I didn't understand that for a while, probably, that you would meet more regularly to set the agenda, and it's, I think it's important to kind of have a knowledge of what that is about.
I also just wanted to call to the attention of the board, the, the set of policies talks about the first vice president and a second vice president. We, as a matter of function, have not had a second vice president, so I, I took the liberty of striking it. However, certainly, should you want to maintain it or consider adding it, that, that isn't...
I think we can strike first, also.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that. I don't know if it fits into, fits in here, but another question I had would be the, you know, like the legislative rep, the WIA rep, is that, that maybe something we want to kind of outline in here, because that was always something, I'm, okay, now what exactly are these duties, and...
Those are our board policies.
But it'd be nice to fit into here...
Which I think is going to be, this is going to...
Correct, so we, you're right, we do need to do that crosswalk, to make sure we don't lose anything here.
Yeah, I think, right, I think it'd be nice to have with this, because it's, that was not clear to me at any point, and it's nice if this is the concise summary, that officer representative roles could be defined here.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's ultimately what's gonna happen here. These will replace our current policies.
Yeah, so we'll do that crosswalk, for sure.
Have, have we defined, I heard you just say Eric and you are on the executive committee. Have we defined that anywhere else, or will that be defined here? It just tells here what the executive committee will do, but it doesn't say that it consists of the superintendent and one or two other...
I, I have been given latitude by the board to invite who I feel necessary to those meetings, so if we want to formalize it, we can. If we want to allow that latitude, that's up to the board.
So does the executive committee change from meeting planning to meeting planning?
Is the executive committee, does it include people not on the board?
That's what Michelle said earlier. She said, her and Eric.
Yeah, so the superintendent and assistant superintendents, was my understanding, that as invited, or I don't know how you want to word it, but I think that's reasonable, and whoever you want to invite to...
I think, in this term, and maybe I use the term wrong, Scott, I apologize. I think in this terminology, the executive committee is the vice president and the president who meets with the superintendent, and then I invite cabinet administrators as I feel necessary.
So the executive committee is just the president and vice president?
Yes, I'm sorry, I think I misused the term, I apologize.
I, yeah. Can we check on that, just to be clear? What the executive, if it typically includes somebody, I'm trying to think, because the WASDA, their board has an executive committee. I don't know if it's just board members, or if it actually includes the executive director or who else. So I'm perfectly fine with saying the executive committee consists of the president... So I'm perfectly fine with saying the executive committee consists of the president, the vice president and the superintendent and then others as, well, it, it wouldn't include others, others could be invited to the meeting.
That's what it's always consisted of in the past.
Is those three. Yeah.
Then we change these words. Because it says in concert with the superintendent.
Well, we define the executive committee to be.
If, if it's all three, I'm just saying it'd be the executive committee will develop proposed board meeting agendas.
And you may want to specify that, say, the executive committee, which consists of the president, vice president and superintendent.
Yep.
Develops proposed board meeting agendas.
Yeah, so let's, let's give some definition to executive committee. Board committees, board may create, all right, are we going to call these committees or subcommittees? Do we call these?
In the past, we've said it's a committee, but it's all, I thought in the past, we've also said the president can create committees. Because there's no voting of the board and the board doesn't create it, at least in the past, we've assigned, I thought.
Okay, board committees and other such activities by whatever name created by the board will not be used to direct, advise, so this is telling me what we can't do, direct staff. This does not talk about the creation, I thought it talked about the creation of the committee. Board committees may or may not include members of the board. All board committees are listed below. All board committees are considered to be ad hoc or temporary. The date for their termination is listed. Committees may be renewed, so every committee that's established has an end date, it sounds like.
So I, I mean, I think we can clarify this however we want, the, the ones that I've seen are we do like the student interview, commit, whatever you want to call that, the superintendent tool development, you know, and so I think defining that and even stating somewhere in here typically involve, it gives some examples just so that it's, we're familiar and we can make it say whatever we want, we can.
I think board committees is fine. I think it's nice if there's some board involvement, like, yeah, we want to have a committee in there, because clearly we're going to be involved if we're going to be serving on it, so I, I don't think it's something that the president should just go do. We, you know, we decide, we talk about like the student interview committee and it, they meet for three days or whatever and then they dissolve and next year we would do the same thing type thing.
So can we look at the current policies? I know it talks about how committees are established and I, I, yeah, I'm not sure that it's.
We may want to clarify too, because sometimes we just kind of informally do that, right? Like the, okay, can, can two people come and do this and we just kind of do it and we, we should probably distinguish, do we want to kind of formalize all those as committees or are we okay just doing this? Who can come? Okay, you know, Sherry and Amy are going to be on the interview committee for this year. Do you know what I mean? Like, we may want to formalize some of that.
I, I think, I think in our current policy it is and that one is one that we haven't formalized. I think we, actually, I think committees are formed by a vote of the board if I'm remembering correctly.
So I mean, like sometimes we don't do that though, we just say, can you two go to this? And, and maybe, and maybe that's fine, I mean, I'm not saying that's wrong, but maybe we want to just tease out.
Is the language in number three strange to, or four strange to anyone else that board committees may or may not include members of the board? I, right, I just was like, that doesn't make sense to me at all. But I can certainly do a crosswalk with the current policy and make a recommendation if that's what you would like or.
No, I would strike that.
Right.
I think the reasoning is that like if a board was rogue and they're saying, we want to appoint this committee of such and such members to do something, but usually we have allowed the district to do that.
Well, I, I think too, that this is written for regular, you know, maybe a board of a corporation where their numbers are always expanding and contracting and we're going to form a committee and they're going to go out and study this.
Oh, maybe.
It might have, it might have board members, it might not. It might be something completely separate, but in our case, I don't think we're going to form a subcommittee or a committee of the board that's, doesn't include.
So here's what we have in here right now. Committees of the board may be created by a majority of the board. The president shall appoint board members to serve on such committees, the purpose in terms of which shall be determined by a majority vote of the board. Board committees shall be limited to two members. Do we want to stay consistent with that or change it?
Is that all it says for committees?
Yeah. Three sentences.
Because we can only have two members without.
Yeah, without being uniform.
Yeah, I think that's what that says, aligns with this, we just, this is more detailed, but.
So I think some of this is good. They're not going to be, we're not going to be created for any operational work, not advising or, or doing the work of staff. They don't act or speak for the board.
You have no authority over staff.
So I know we've had some subcommittees, for example, when we've had.
Student reps?
Well, yeah, student reps. I don't know that I necessarily like that they won't speak or act for the board. Although, I don't know that, we probably need a little clarification there. The authority, the responsibility and authority are carefully stated in this policy. There's a lot of words in here that I'm not sure are consistent with what we've done in the past.
Oh, no, it's absolutely not consistent with what we've done in the past.
I would, I would take off five as well unless we're going to, because the beginning of the thing, it kind of makes it suggest that you can create a committee when you desire, which I think is good. So I would, I would take off five and say, because the idea is to have it be flexible.
You do it when you feel it's necessary.
But I would, do think it would be helpful to list some of the typical ones or just say, you know, such as this and this.
So I'm thinking in the past, we have had a subcommittee, committee that's heard grievances and made decisions on those.
Do we need to formalize it? Before we've just said, who can come these days, you know, we haven't formally done that though, we've just kind of said, okay, who, who can make it and we'll kind of pick.
Well, there's been some of those where people have had a, when I'm thinking grievances, I'm thinking like union grievances, but there's been people, appeals.
Right, appeals.
Yeah. I think with appeals, we have to have the board.
A majority of the board.
Right.
Because I, I meant to, yeah.
And.
But these subcommittees that we've done for grievances has been less than, yeah, less than a majority. And I don't, so maybe we need to make sure we're consistent there.
Well, and I can find out, I just don't know the, like, I need to find it, so for like a student hearing, for example, that's a, a whole board, an appeal, you know, the superintendent evaluation tool, that was a committee, you know, that, this, this, how it's defined, that would be maybe helpful.
Is the student board rep, should we be taking action on that tonight, maybe?
Yeah, so I think those are, I think that should be a committee of the board that comes back with recommendations that we take action on.
Student board rep?
We see, I think we should tease out those scenarios, the five that we just listed and what needs to be formalized and what is acceptable to just say who can go and you two go, like.
Yeah, so, so clearly the superintendent evaluation, that's a subcommittee and that was brought to the board for approval. I don't know that we've done that with board representatives in the past.
No, it's been who can go.
These are the board reps.
Well, and I, I guess.
And I don't think anybody's had any issue with it, it's just we haven't.
So the ones that are, when you go for the student board reps, you know, it's not just the two, the, the ones that can go from the board, you've got, you know, you've got like six other representatives from high schools and so it's not just us making the decisions.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, I'm thinking that, that we probably ought to formalize that. It's brought back to the board and says, this is the recommendation and we would, I mean, we could put it on the consent agenda, but probably something that ought to be, ought to be formally, formal action by the board.
For choosing the student.
Yeah, for approving the student.
For approving the, yeah, the, the recommendation.
And maybe not, I know because we have the superintendent advisory, I mean, some of that, the principal superintendent just does, so I, we don't want to get, so maybe it's not.
I mean, if we're going to get, so for, if one, if a board member resigns and there's another one appointed to the board.
Like we had this year, well, we had a student, I mean, we had a student one, not a.
If, if one of the five board members resigns.
Which has happened, which has happened.
Yeah.
And there's a, I believe, a legal process, like some legal requirements for that. The look on my face about the student board reps is we're interviewing those folks tomorrow and so I guess if we're going to change that, I would ask them to do that after.
Yeah, I agree.
If we could follow our past practice to get through this.
I think that's fine.
That was the look on my face like, all right.
I'm not saying we change our interview process at all, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, and I think the student one, it's, this is somewhat uncharted, not everyone does that, so there probably isn't an established format for that, but I think it's fine to just continue how we've done it this year and if we want to formalize it more through this process for next year, that's fine.
We're just doing it tomorrow.
No, no, I'm not suggesting we change that or that we say, gosh, this is all void because we didn't follow this formal process, but I think it would be good if.
I don't disagree.
If we call it a committee.
Well, and then define, what's their purpose, their purpose, you know, is it to cert, like is it to, you know, I, I really like having some parameters around that, that would.
Yeah. Okay.
The only thing with the student, the student rep one is that if you say that, then I think if you say that, that the two board members or whoever's on the board has to bring it back to the board to make recommendations, then you're taking away from everyone else that's on that committee, the other eight people or whatever that is making their recommendations from hearing the actual interview of those people. Because it's just not.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that we would.
Review and approve it, just maybe even a consent agenda, just so that we're saying that whatever you guys, has been decided, approve formally.
Right, so that they're not going, well, I was just picked by two members of the board and not.
Yeah, so we really could use the same process for the board rep selection as we do for our hiring of teachers, for example. So interview committees get together, they make a recommendation, it goes on the consent agenda on the personnel action. We could really mirror that same process with the student board reps once those decisions have been made, goes on the consent agenda, you approve.
I'm not trying to throw a wrench in that process, I just think it might be good if we formalize the approval of those, of that recommendation.
I think we already have that, as Erin said, that process for when an elected board member resigns. We just follow that with student board reps.
All right, it would be different, I mean, because there's legal things you have to follow for.
Yeah, they have to come through the process.
Yeah, they're all, they're sworn in too, just like us. I mean, I understand they're not, they're not registered at the county.
Right.
But, yeah. Okay, is that, have we done enough on committees?
So I will, well, I guess Scott kind of did it for us, crossedwalked the current policy, but I'll kind of look at those two things and make sure that the language is consistent. And then add some examples, grievance, student hearing, appeals, I'll, I'll do some work with it, bring it back and if you need me to do more work, I will.
Okay.
But I think it would be a good idea to, to put that on the consent agenda when we.
For the student board reps? Yeah, that, that's not a problem.
Okay. Moving along to annual work plan. So the board will follow an annual work plan, which includes but is not limited to monitoring and review of policies, dialogue sessions with community and staff groups and activities to improve board performance. The annual planning cycle will end each year in August to allow the superintendent to properly align internal operational systems and processes, so, ending in August.
Getting close.
Is that what we, is that the track we're on?
Well, so here's the thing, I struggled with this a little bit because what we've used as our annual work plan is the document where, and I brought it to you guys last year in the fall, and it was an Excel spreadsheet where I outlined kind of a, a timeline of when certain reports would happen, the retreats were in there. That's what we've used as our annual work plan. What they're recommending as an annual work plan is a whole separate calendar where you break down each of these policies and you review them. So it kind of depends on what we want to call our annual work plan. You know, if we're talking about our annual work plan as the document that we've been using, like I typically bring that to you in August as, hey, this is what we're going to do together over the course of the next year. So I just need a little clarification in terms of what we're referring to as an annual work plan. If, if the annual work plan is the district objectives, we do that January to January. So I just am not.
Yeah. So this is more calendar, not annual goals.
And what we do for the annual work plan is actually pretty comprehensive. You know, I really could create a companion document that outlines, like these are on when our retreats are, here's when superintendent evaluation is, you know.
I, I think something like that would be very helpful.
So that this is when you're going to do your board annual self-assessment and so it's just really streamlined. These are the things that, and that goes in the annual work plan and you know kind of every year, these are about the same time that you're going to do these activities. Separately, we will absolutely maintain a timeline of the monthly meetings and the topics that we cover and we'll continue to.
Okay, so I'm good with ending in August. Are these, any comments on that? So the annual work plan will include scheduled dialogue sessions with stakeholder groups, persons whose viewpoints are considered helpful in the board.
May include.
So, oh, yeah.
Because sometimes you've wanted to do, sometimes there's been a need for those, sometimes there hasn't.
And I'm not sure we're going to know all of those a year in advance, so I think we've got to have some flexibility there. Governance process improvement activities, including orientation of candidates and new board members. Other discussions by the board about means to improve performance. Scheduled monitoring of all board governance policies, we probably need to formalize that and review our policies.
Yeah, I had a question about that, so it specifies board governance policies. I've always kind of wondered, what is the, do, is there a schedule for reviewing district policies in general? That's why, because that's probably something that's come up, like that's always been confusing to me, you know, it's like, well, this policy we reviewed in 1997, like, is there some sort of like, obviously you don't want to specify every 900 policies, but maybe the, the general block of policies.
So I'm giggling because as long as I've been in the district, this has been a conversation and I think if you look at our policies, certainly we all recognize that there's a number of them that need to be reviewed. Mr. Lehman and I talked at great length about this. We are actually going to contract with WASA or WASDA, WASDA to help us with that and so we will have a schedule of when those are, like they're ready to do the whole thousand series, like, and bring it to us in October. We were like, whoa, 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 we're not quite ready for that, but, so we will have a schedule of that, which is separate from this.
Yeah, that seems like a separate issue. I'm just curious.
Yeah, it is and, and we have a plan and, and you'll see a, a document that outlines the plan and timeline for that.
So these are our board governance policies.
Correct.
And I think it might be good if every two years, we, we just put that. And if we, so, B is board or governance process improvement activities. I think we ought to put something in here about orientation of board members.
So to me, that's the time that you do it, right? Every two years when you have elections, that's when you need to have this review so that they know what's going on.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, can we formalize that?
Yes.
This review and orientation.
This review should occur every, whatever, you know, when there's.
Well, yeah.
The other piece that, again, this is your work, certainly not mine, you are very diligent about tending WASA events and activities. I think it would be good to outline because annually that November, that, that's something standing that you guys have done. We now follow that up with a retreat, I think those are things that would follow under B.
Yeah, I agree. I think that would be really helpful when you're talking about changeover, when there's new board members, having that just generic, basic idea.
And then there's ledge in January.
Well, let's, let's put, as part of our annual work plan, now, obviously this isn't going to be every year, but, so most boards, they have members kind of. Well, let's, let's put, as part of our annual work plan, now, obviously, this isn't gonna be every year, but, so most boards, they have members coming and going. We know that ours, even if there's not new members, it's good to, to review those policies every two years, and then I would put after an election, when there's a new, or when there's a new board member, that we do an orientation, and I would make that separate from.
Can we take out candidates? Orientation of new board members? Cause we, we haven't done candidates to date, and I don't even know. That'd be a lot of time to orient every candidate. Unless we wanna sign up for that.
I'm not sure what they were thinking about for candidates, but, yeah, I would take.
I mean, I can see how it'd be helpful somewhat, but that just doesn't seem, seems like a logistical and legal issue, you know.
Yeah, I, I think we need to put in there, following each election cycle, or at other times when there's new board members, do an orientation.
Right.
So, I think we should add in this section also orientation, I know Ms. Whitney does this with student board reps, but, of student board reps, because we're, for student board reps, we haven't been following what's in the policy, or we, they've kind of gotten away, maybe we haven't told them what the expectations are written down in the policy, but the policy says student board reps will attend study sessions, student board reps will provide reports to the board, and we've kinda gotten away from stressing those expectation to the board reps, I don't know that we got an official report, or, and, and over the years, them attending study sessions has fallen down, so hopefully in this next year.
Establishing that right up front.
I don't know if it's appropriate to put student board rep under the job description, put student board rep, where we have the board will, student board reps will. We have ten items in our policy right now that talk about what student board reps will do.
Are they in the one thousand series?
Yeah, and right now, I think.
So if they're not in here, you, you said you were gonna do a crosswalk between these and what's in our policy.
There's ten, there's ten expectations of student board reps in here right now, and I don't know that we're, I, I know that we're not following them or stressing to board member, student board reps, that they're expected to be followed at this time, so how do we incorporate that into here, and is it appropriate?
I don't, would that be part of this annual work plan, or would that just remain under its own section, the student reps?
I think it's under its own, own section.
Board job description, could we have, the board will do this, student board reps will do.
Well, I think we'll, we'll do it, so Michelle's gonna do a crosswalk, and I think wherever, I don't know where it is now, is it under?
It's under student board reps.
Is it its own section?
Yeah.
I think just including that in here would be fine.
One fifteen P, or eleven fifteen P.
And, so like, the committee one that you just read from, where's that at? Is it, do you have a pull?
I think it was eleven thirty, eleven thirty.
I certainly will do the crosswalk, my initial kind of sense is that this is your governance model, not, but, I can look at it. I think the other thing, Scott, is in there, does it, does it have any language in the student board rep policy about accountability, like, if they don't do those things?
I, I had thought they were invited to attend the study sessions.
So it says responsibilities of, responsibilities of student representatives, and I won't read them all, but there's ten of them, and it says the student representatives will, it doesn't say are expected to, when they choose, but it says they will, attending, attend special meetings or study sessions as scheduled, provide a report. There's others there.
I, I think maybe we need to review those separately, we don't have that information right here today.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it.
And if, if you, when you do your crosswalk, if you wanna take a look at that, and if you have any recommendations, you could bring them to us. I have, I have no issue, I, I think we need to put here as part of our annual work plan, and maybe even in December, or whatever month we, you know, or maybe give a timeframe that we need to orient new candidates, and then put including student reps. I'm, I'm, I'm fine putting that in. Under B, just the orientation of.
Yeah, the challenge is a different time of the year, and it's a different, as you were saying, it's not. Sorting that out is important, I think, and.
Yeah, or maybe we give it its own bullet, you know, just part of our, part of our schedule is.
Kind of like, it's complete on the section, but.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, cause kinda like how we were, the WIA, I think that should be listed on somewhere here, under officers or somewhere, and maybe we just add a section, student, cause I think that would be, that's a reasonable thing to have in this, at least somewhere, even of it as its own, just so that it's, we're all familiar and.
Well, I mean, I'm even kinda playing this out, so if you had it under your board governance culture policies, and then you're going to do a review of the board governance policies, and that's one of them, and we have a student board rep who's not attending, we're gonna have that conversation in a study session where we talk about so-and-so that's not attending, that actually really kind of feels like a superintendent responsibility, and so, you know, maybe it just needs to be its own section, I can work on, when do we orient them? What are we gonna hold them accountable to, what does that look like, and work on tightening that up, completely separate from our board governance piece. And again, given that it's happening right now, we would be looking at doing that for the next round.
Maybe then, if, if we do it that way, then just including somewhere, just a little blip that says, student board representatives are, will be managed under the superintendent, you know what I mean, just so that it's, has at least a sentence in there that kind of shows it, they're part of our board, and this is, but that's managed this way, or.
Not, not to get too far off, but, so if we don't update this for the new incoming student reps, we should.
Follow it.
Follow what we have written down already, and, and make sure that they understand that, you know, as they're interviewing and.
I will take full responsibility for that, I did not do a good job about explaining that to the board rep, and certainly can do a better job this next round.
It benefits them, cause they.
I don't disagree, it just wasn't a.
They understand issues more.
I just kinda followed the lead of, you know, Valerie took a lot of responsibility for that, so I, I need to get deeper involved, and I can do that this next round.
Okay, anything else on annual work plan? I think we're gonna formalize the monitoring of board governance policies, and then put something in about orientation of maybe the board members.
I don't, I don't mean to belabor this, but number one, to me, doesn't make any sense, I'm not sure what it means, and it feels like something that I may end up doing.
What?
I just don't.
The annual planning cycle?
Yeah, so, so is it each year in August, I'm gonna bring a new calendar to you, is that what that says to you, or what, what exactly does that mean? So this planning calendar.
That's our board planning calendar, right? August.
I don't, I don't know, that's, are we talking about this new calendar that I'm gonna create with this two-year cycle of when we orient board members?
Not two-year cycle, it will be a one-year cycle.
But every two years, we're gonna do the review of the.
I think it would be, well, to put in there, that on the odd year, or, you know, the first part of the even year, after elections, within three months of the election, the board will review the board governance policies.
So if number one is referring to the big document that we use to drive the agendas, that actually ends in June? Because then I start a new one for July? So I just don't, I'm, I'm confused about what number one is referring to.
Are you talking about the goals?
No.
There's so many things.
What is in August?
So, so nothing at this point, that's, and that's my fault, I didn't understand number one, so, so we have kind of three things simultaneously. We have the document that we use to say, these are the reports that we're gonna.
Right.
Okay, that really runs July, our first board meeting in July, to June, the last board meeting in June.
Strictly board.
Strictly board meetings, and put study sessions in there, et cetera. Then we have our district objectives that are January to January, and attached to my evaluation, and now we're gonna create this calendar where we're gonna outline when board orientations happen, when student board reps are oriented, when we're gonna go to PDs together, right?
Yes, so, a couple of months ago, we were talking about doing these school visit things.
Yes, yes, that would be on there.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in favor of simplifying, I'm just having one, I, I, so can we change the superintendent thing? I would much rather have that be just followed to July to June, because that makes more sense to me, and it makes sense if that's our typical school year, that are we legally bound to do the January to January, I would much rather have just you do one, there's just one calendar, it's July to June, that's how much, it follows the school year, that makes the most sense to me, I know that there may be some, like, budgetary things that, or financial, that has to be the end of the calendar year, but to me, it seems like we're making, we're making this way too complicated, like, it should just be the one, this is what the July to June looks like.
Who put, who put August here?
I did, and I'm sorry, cause it was bad thinking.
So for this, once a year, we, we need to update the, the annual work plan. I don't know that we go through and say, in the board meeting in January, we're going to be talking about this.
Right.
But I think there's things that do happen regularly through the year. So, now, you're talking about, you're talking about the superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that should follow the school year, it makes no sense to me to do that in January, when we're just right in the middle of the school year, because a lot of the objectives things we're evaluating kind of go by the school year, so it just, that's so confusing and out of the.
I feel the same way when we're talking about, when we're talking about annual goals. However, when it comes to the superintendent evaluation, which I think was what, what the intent was, to align the annual goals to the evaluation. And the evaluation is done in January, because that's when you've gotta make a decision on how your superintendent is performing. It's, it's difficult if you make it in June or July, and then you're gonna terminate your superintendent, and then they're, they're without work until the next July, potentially, so, that, that's why the evaluation schedule is set that way, now, it's not to say that we can't move our goals, but then our goals lag the.
I, I just think, I'm all for simplification, I think too much, too often in these types of public governmental board, we just complicate things so much, and like, if we have to do some evaluation, then I'm fine with that, but like, bargaining's in the summer, everything is a summer, it just makes so much sense to me that, that it just is a July to June thing, and, and I wish we could just do it in June, we review the whole school year, and we just say, like, I, I don't understand why that has to be a January thing, but if it has to be, I would minimize that.
So the evaluation does.
And I would minimize it to, to, just so that everything's aligned into one calendar, planning, cycle, to me, that's easier for the.
If you, if the board wants, I can explore some, the question about the superintendent evaluation.
I don't think we change the superintendent evaluation, I, I think that needs to stay in January, because if there's, that's when we determine whether we're gonna renew the contract for the following year.
Does that have to be a year-to-year thing, is there any reason why you can't have a three-year, that it does not have to be, like, cause, right, if you have a three-year contract, you're not gonna terminate that person, per se, unless there's some egregious. Do you know what I mean, I just, I just think it's confusing, like, I've been confused this last couple of years, like, okay, it's January, and what are we evaluating? And we're right in the middle of the school year, and it's just very confusing, to me, it's so much.
It took me, it took me like four graphic organizers in a year to get it, like, I'm dialed in now, but it took.
Like, but think about how much time it takes to devote to that, and I'm confused, honestly, about the yearly, like, I'm all for, like, a yearly evaluation for any field or any job, but I mean, if the contract's for three years, you know, you're not gonna, like, you're not deciding if you're gonna renew their next year, like, if they have a three-year contract, that person should feel comfortable that they have that unless they did something egregious, and.
Well, yeah.
But, again, I, I just, to me, it would simplify it, and it would make it easier for everyone, but, that's just me.
But if you do your one, the one calendar from June, June or July, whatever the thing is, and then just add the annual work plan in on that calendar.
Have we had enough discussion on this?
Sorry.
No, no.
I just wanted to, I just wanna meet the expectation, so, I, yes.
So do you, do you sit down in January, or not January, but June, and say, okay, from July through June, this is our anticipated board meeting topics?
I did, I did this year, I did at the beginning of this year.
Okay.
Didn't I, Scott, or did we do it both years together?
We did it both years.
Both years, yes, I brought.
To which I would say, if there are things that we have to talk about, so budget, for example, we, we talk about the budget, that should be part of our annual work plan. Budget discussion, budget approval are these months, these meetings. This orientation that we talk about, the, the retreat after the WASDA conference, I mean, those things could be, those things would be on the schedule, they're not a board meeting, per se, but those things would be on this schedule. And I think that's what we're trying to, we just make sure we have, we're looking out a year with this plan, and whatever month, if it's June, it's July, it's August, then we do that. The annual goals is something separate, and the superintendent evaluation is something separate as well, at least for now.
Right.
I'd like to see some open spots, you know, like, topics TBD in there, because with the new way we're running board meetings, where you guys ask for input from the board on what hot topics they'd like on a future either study session, or extended study session during the board meeting, to show that those are open, and.
It's a good idea.
So I, I, I'm not for filling in every board meeting, it's, these board meetings, we have to discuss this, for ex, and probably the main one is budget. Every year, this, by this time, we have to have a budget, and that's not a, that's not an optional thing. But all the other, well, I should say all the other, but.
I would even put the things that we do regularly, though, like, the WASDA, the retirees, like, I think it's good to know that, like, this is what we always plan on doing, we're not required by law, but this is just our standard, and then having those slots, because like you said, things come up, that need to be addressed.
We gotta schedule open time.
Yeah, yeah, but I think having all the regular things, like, I was thinking back this year, I'm like, okay, right, the, the first in, meeting in June, we recognize retirees, right? Like, I was trying to make sure that.
We get a graduation report, we.
Exactly.
We get our school lunch update.
Put those all in, right, nutrition update is every year in March, or whatever.
Yeah, any assessment updates, I think those should be, but, but, most of our, I would expect that there's gonna be quite a few board meetings where we don't have a formal, or an identified topic, and I wouldn't propose it at the beginning of the year, we try and fill everyone up, because we're gonna have these things that come up, so.
All right.
Swearing that board members, you know, then. Yeah. Okay, enough said on annual work plan, board members' code of conduct. Conduct yourselves, ourselves, lawfully with integrity and high ethical standards. Model the behaviors expected of staff and students, okay, so board members will serve interest to the entire school, members recognize this responsibility, oh, entire district, sorry, recognize this responsibility to the whole, to be greater than any loyalty, any member, individual member, or advocacy or interest group. Loyalty based on membership on other boards or staff, conflicts based on personal interest of any board member, conflicts based on being an employee or relative of an employee, conflicts based upon members' election from any trustee area of the district, any issue, concerns with any of those?
My main concern is the wording that, the one, the board members will serve the interests of the entire school district, and I think when, if people read, you know, obviously, I don't know if people actually read this, but when they hear that, they have this feeling that this is about the district would say, associated with district administration, or that it kind of, to me, some people can view that as, our purpose here is to be, you know, that's who we're servants to, or rubber stamps to, or this to that, and I, I think in the past, that's been an issue, I don't think it's as much an issue now, but that has been a concern, and I think five years ago, people would have looked at that and be like, well, yeah, you're just here to.
We should use consistent language, whether, whether it's, what did we say earlier, stakeholders, or customers, or students, whatever it is. Is it in all of these spots, cause we're all over the map here.
Cause when we had our, our retreat with Tricia, like, and we talked about why are we here, what do we do, it was all about students, it was about serving the community, and so to me, this is confusing, because this makes it seem like the number one priority is the district, and I think it means, like, they mean students, teachers, staff, but, but to me, it's not clear that, to me, that could be misconstrued, and, and viewed as, you could say stakeholders, like we said, I don't, so I don't know what the best, but that, that to me, kinda raised a red flag, like.
So I think we, the.
I get what they're saying, the main thing here is, like, have a view of the whole school district, not just of, like, one school, like, I'm here to advocate for Robert Frost, and that's it.
Right. So, I mean, we could add words, like something, the entire school district, and not, well, or maybe we put down here.
They want to be consistent with our front page. Represents, leads and serves the stakeholders. That's what we.
I wouldn't put stakeholders. I, I think the district is the right words, but we'd need to clarify that the school district doesn't mean staff, superintendent. It means.
But why would we be inconsistent with what we wrote here?
Because I don't think, again, this is just my mind, stakeholders to me is people.
Mm-hmm.
And.
We're not serving the interests of all stakeholders?
Well, we should.
As a whole. I mean, we can't serve each individual stakeholder.
Yeah. But.
You're trying to incorporate the organization, like teachers.
Well, not, not just, yeah, everybody's a stakeholder, but I'm. I don't.
And maybe it's fine how it is. I just don't like how it, it makes it seem like, you know, we're subject to the, this governmental organization or for, more so than actual, wait, what are, what are we here? We're here to serve the, but.
So, I mean, we, we could certainly put something down here and maybe even letter A or before letter A is, uh, recognize a responsibility to the whole to be greater than, you know, district staff or something like that. I don't, that's not the right words, but I, I think Aaron's point is a good one.
What would happen if you just took the whole first sentence out?
I like the idea of having entire in there. Just, I mean, hopefully every board member recognizes that they're not here just advocating for a single group. It's, it's the entire district. That's why I don't want to take that out.
Okay.
But if we can find a way to reword that, that would incorporate entire, but, but maybe make the category broader than just.
Maybe say something like, board members will serve the interests of the, you know, entire school district or somewhere you clarify in there, you know, student, staff, administration. I don't know.
Stakeholders.
Stake, you kind of add a.
But define stakeholders.
Well, right.
Anyway, so.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
We're not going to word smith it here, but just make a note. Okay? All right. Number two, board members will not attempt to exercise individual authority over the organization. Members will not attempt to assume personal responsibility for resolving operational problems or complaints. Any such complaints will be referred to the superintendent. Organization meaning school organization. Members will not personally direct any part of the operational organization.
I think that's where, I think that's good, good.
Yeah. Okay. So recognizing that organization is not the board, it's the.
I think, I, I wouldn't want to gloss over 2C because I think that's one, and maybe we've all feel like we've all individually followed it, but that we've had issues in, and different interpretations of what 2C means. So it says, when speaking to the press or otherwise publicly sharing personal opinions, members will respect decisions of the board and will not undermine those decisions. Not that we need to talk about it a lot. I just don't want to gloss over it. And I think if we don't all nod our head that yes, we agree to that, we should take it out.
I think the different interpretation would be that publicly sharing personal opinions. What is public if you meet with one, two people, two or more people? Is that considered public? Are you still private? Is it, if you're with a group of 10 people, if you share it? You know, I think that's where we've run into maybe some issues where it's, was that privately or?
Well, even, and it's not just us, but other public representatives share something on their personal Facebook page and they say, oh, it's my personal Facebook page. It's, it's okay. And then, and then they get in the paper for that. I mean, stuff like that and I, some of us may be guilty of that, maybe not, but, I mean, just as long as we all nod our head that we agree to it. If we want to change the words and further clarify, we can.
So I'm fine with leaving it how it is.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Turning the page. D, members will not publicly express individual negative judgments about the superintendent or staff performance.
Where does it say that?
It just says publicly.
Wow.
Just to point out. Any such judgments of superintendent or staff performance will be expressed in closed sessions. So, so we, any of that stuff needs to be done with discretion and not publicly. Number three, to build trust among members and to ensure an environment conducive to effective govern- governance, members will focus on issues rather than personalities, respect the decisions of the full board, exercise honesty in all written and interpersonal interaction, and never intentionally mislead or misinform each other. Criticize privately, praise publicly. Make every reasonable effort to protect the integrity and promote the positive image of the district and one another. Never embarrass each other or the district. All right. So I think those are general rules of good conduct. Does anybody have any additions or deletions? Hearing no comment, we'll move on. Members will exercise personal discipline in the performance of their duties, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum when acting as board members. Five, members will maintain confidentiality appropriate to sensitive issues and inform, and information that otherwise may tend to compromise the integrity or legal standing of the board, especially those matters discussed in closed sessions. So several things there. Any comments on that board member's code of conduct that we haven't already addressed? Okay, moving to board members' conflict of interest. Board members are expected to avoid conflicts of interest involving all matters considered by the board. A conflict of interest exists when a member is confronted with an issue in which the member has a personal or financial interest or an issue or circumstance that could render the pub, render the member unable to devote complete loyalty and singleness of purpose to the public interest. So personal or financial interest in any matter being considered by the board, the member shall disclose such interest to the board and shall not vote on the matter or attempt to influence the decisions of board members. Number two, a board member shall not also be an employee of the district. Number three, with the exception of monthly stipend for board service, no member shall receive any compensation for services rendered to the district.
We should change it. It's not a monthly stipend. It could be a meeting stipend if collected.
With the exception of, is that, is that a stipend? What's that called?
Yes, it is.
Is it a stipend? And we could just take out monthly.
Yeah, just call it stipend.
This provision shall not prohibit members from receiving reimbursements for authorized expenses. Okay. Number four, board shall not enter into any contract with any of its members or with a firm in which a member has a financial interest. If such contract results in the member's direct personal gain directly related to the contract. Five, a board member is expected to avoid conflict of interest in the exercise of the member's fiduciary responsibility. Accordingly, a member, a board member may not disclose or use confidential information acquired during performance of official duties as a means to further the board member's own personal interest or the interest of the member, the board's immediate family. Accept a gift of substantial value or economic benefit which would tend to improperly influence a reasonable person or which the board member knows or should know is primarily for the purpose of a reward. Substantial value or economic gift benefit is defined by, do we need to define that?
I can do a crosswalk with our current policy.
Okay.
And then I'll get legal counsel to weigh in.
Yeah, if you would. I'm, if we need to put a value on there, we can. I would prefer not to. I would hope that we.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine not to. I, I just filled out mine for work yesterday and they, in healthcare, they specify $50, but I, I don't know if that's, if we have to, I don't, we don't, if we don't have to, we don't have to. But that's, in healthcare, what's specified is $50.
Yeah. And healthcare, you know, there's some boards that might be easily influenced. Who's going to influence us? Or, or try to? A curriculum peddler or a?
Construction people. I mean, I don't, I can think of people that could.
Yeah, construction, construction.
As far as I know.
Could be, but.
School construction or.
So our, our current policy just says, the following acts are prohibited by law. An officer may accept any compensation, gift, reward or gratuity.
I can talk to Sarah about this.
There's not a value.
Yeah. So, yeah. All right.
You know, besides graduation, when they give us the medallion thing.
Right.
You know what I mean? There's little things that.
Yeah. And I think it depends on who it is too. I, I mean, obviously if it's a vendor, that, then you got to be careful. Okay. Letter C, engage in substantial financial transaction for private business purposes with a person whom the board member directly supervises. So. Do we directly supervise anybody other than, okay. Perform an official act which directly confers an economic benefit on a business in which the board member has a substantial financial interest or is engaged as a counsel, consultant, representative or agent. So if you can, it's like each of those have something as far as.
So we kind of indirectly, um, direct, I guess I should say directly supervise legisla- uh, Marie, right?
Yeah, yeah, although.
We have a contract.
We have a contract with her. Certainly that's, that is a potential for conflict of interest. If she starts sending gifts or Mariners tickets or trips to Hawaii, then they probably ought to not accept it.
Or if she started giving you things like that.
That's what I mean.
Right.
If she individually sends something or somebody like Marie in this case. She's the example. All right. Number nine, process for addressing board member violations. The board and each of its members are committed to faithful compliance with provisions of the board's policies. The board recognizes that its failure to deal with deliberate or continuing violations if it of its policies, I think that's of, risks the loss of confidence in the board's ability to govern effectively. Therefore, in the event of a member's willful or continuing violation, the board ordinarily will address the issue by conversation in a private setting between the offending member and the board president or other, other individual member. B, possible removal of the board, by the board, from any board leadership or committee positions in which the offending member has been appointed or elected. And C, censure the offending member of the board as a means of separating the board's focus and the intent from those of the offending member. Anything, any comments on that? Any? Does that sound reasonable? All right. Looks like the last one, governance cost.
It's not been a practice in the past.
Okay, so that wraps up this portion of our retreat slash study session today. Any comments, questions?
Thank you for the work.
So I think going forward then, Michelle, you're going to take this and do a crosswalk. Make some, make these changes and then we will take a look at it again and then approve it and roll it into our policies.
This has been a great book.
Yeah.
I, I dig it out frequently, actually.
Okay.
I've got marquees in it.
Good. All right. So we'll conclude and be back for our regular board meeting at 6:30.
Yes, sir.